All right, welcome everyone to our city council meeting for Monday, April 22. If I can get a roll call, Madam Clerk to establish court.
David Avanzino.
Present.
Steve Holfield.
Here.
Harry Meyer.
Here.
Autumn Slane, here. Susan Groening is absent with notice. Terry McLung.
I'm here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, get a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Slane made the motion and Mr. Holfield seconded it. Need to add the first quarter financials. Is that for city clerk?
Yep.
Okay, for the city clerk. Also minutes for April 8, 2004, parks first quarter and cemetery first quarter. And also, I'd like to withdraw the resolution on the, under new business, item number three regarding the wind turbines. So, is there anything else, anybody? If not, get a motion to approve, the agenda is amended.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. McLung made the motion and Mr. Meyer seconded it. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the minutes for March 25.
I move we approve the minutes for March 25 meeting, 2024.
Second.
Mr. Holfield made the motion, Mr. Avanzino seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Motion for the April 8 minutes.
I move we approve the minutes for April 8, 2024.
Second.
All right, any discussion, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the April 8 minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Under planning, at our last meeting, we nominated Michael Welch for the planning commission.
I move we appoint Michael Welch to planning commission, position number three.
Second.
Mr. Holfield made the motion, Mr. Avanzino seconded it. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of Michael Welch for the planning commission, position three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And a motion for discussion for Aaron.
Borey.
Borgy?
Borey.
Boren, for the Parks Commission.
I move we appoint Aaron Borey to the Parks Commission, position number four.
Second.
All right, Mr. Holfield made the motion, Mr. McLung seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Borey being nominated for the Parks Commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, that brings us up to public comments. Come on up to here.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the nomination and I'm really proud to work on the commission. I have a brief statement here as related now, I didn't see your agenda, the one you omitted about the wind turbines, but mine speaks to that. Anyway, Act 8, 151 of 2023, the Arkansas Legislature passed the Arkansas Data Centers Act, which was introduced just over a week before the 2023 legislative session ended and passed. The current law restricts local governments, including ours, from implementing restrictions prohibiting construction of data centers in their towns. Carroll County Senator Brian Young has spearheaded an effort to change the law. Senator King has expressed concerns that this legislation was rushed through the legislature without a chance for lawmakers to read the bill before voting on it. Senator Allen Clark of Lonsdale said regulating crypto mines is the most important issue of all for the legislature and should not wait until the 2025 legislative session. "I don't want to wait a year to hear about the subject and be able to act on it if we hear about something that really needs to be acted on now," Clark said. The Arkansas Senate cleared the way on Thursday, 2021-24, Thursday, April 21, 2024, for lawmakers to take up several potential amendments to the 2023 law that limited the state's ability to regulate cryptocurrency mining operations. Crypto mines are large groups of computers that harvest digital currency. They are usually located in rural areas due to the space they take up. They require large amounts of electricity to keep the computers running, as well as large amounts of water to keep them cool. Many communities, including Harrison, have expressed concern over these operations in their towns. At a recent city hall meeting in Harrison, the room was at capacity. Many people took to the stand to share their opinions, where the biggest worries was the noise caused by the fans which runs constantly to cool the computers and massive servers. We almost redone the minute. Along with the recent issues in Carroll County regarding the wind turbines, I feel that Eureka Springs should act now, getting ahead of the situation rather than waiting until the companies file applications to install these machines in our town, and it becomes too late to challenge these corporations once they have the okay from the state. I would like the City of Eureka Springs City Council to pass a declaration that wind turbines and data centers or crypto mines not be allowed within a one-mile radius of Eureka Springs city limits. These facilities would degrade the historic designation of Eureka Springs. These sites would be detrimental to the scenic and historic beauty of Eureka Springs and have a negative impact on the tourism in this town, which is the lifeblood of Eureka Springs. Although we may agree or disagree to the disputes of the potential environmental impacts of these turbines and data centers, my concern is the economic impact and the historical degradation that Eureka Springs would incur if these were allowed. I feel that by creating a public declaration, it would help our town prevent such an occurrence from happening in the future. I respectfully request your consideration for this proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, that concludes the public comments. We'll get on to our unfinished business. Number one is a sewer update. Get a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, Mr. Meyer made the motion, Mr. McLung seconded it.
Hello, Council and Mayor. So as far as sewer updates go, today, we actually got the sledge bomb finally working, so we're able to process sledge again. It's been a long process, but we're finally there, so back to normal operations as far as that goes. Luckily, we never ran out of capacity. We kind of used the SBR for some of the sledge capacity and then that secondary clarifier basin that was repurposed into a sledge basin. So now we're going to hurry up and try to process as much of that sledge and get it out of this, you know, clear it back out. So other than that, everything's pretty good. We met with McClellan Engineering out there last week and did a walkthrough. We went through the old maintenance building just to look at the things, what was in there, and we ended up finding some old plan sheets and stuff, so McClellan scanned those in for us. I should have those in hand here pretty soon. One of the nice things about what we found in the old maintenance building there and the plans is the records that were just kind of missing, like Lakeside, how Lakeside came to be or how it was constructed. And one of the missing components of Lakeside is aeration, and we've found out where those blowers are supposed to be in the old, I don't know if you guys remember, the little building that was next to the fence. So we have some blowers over there right now, so we're going to try to reinstall a blower and see if we can get that working. But yeah, that hasn't worked in 15 years or more, so it's pretty amazing. Stand for any questions.
Was there ever any aeration or did they just not install it?
Yeah, there was at one time, so when, in those plans, it showed the piping that went from that little building to Lakeside to provide aeration to that, to that system, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Are we, online, has everything been submitted as so far as what we can do as far as the grants?
Yeah, we received the response back from the ARNC on a grant that we applied for, that we were on a priority list, but it sounds like we'll be on the priority list this week, so Zane's going to be reaching out to them this week to talk to them and say, hey, look, we are on that priority list, it just didn't show up in the records just yet. So, but yeah, we have applied for everything that we can right now.
Anyone else? All right, Simon, I think that will lead us right into get a motion to discuss the water leak remediation.
I'll move.
Second.
All right. So we finished up the leak up the top of Plainer Hill, of course, and got all the concrete hatched up and everything up there. Right now, we have another leak that I talked about last time over on Main Street where it ties into Spring Street. The guys think they found that source, that leak, this morning, so we're just kind of watching it, see if it dries up tonight. We think it's a service line that goes to the house that's next to Basin Park, that multi-story house, they've got multiple meters for that because they have different units for whatever, but we think that's where that water's coming from, so we'll find out more tomorrow. I've got Rockin' W will start Monday working on the leak in front of the transit trolley station right here on South Main Street. That'll start on Monday. Hopefully, we can get that wrapped up in a couple days. As far as that goes, I think that's about all that I'm aware of right now.
Are we coming up on flat steel with our wall up there?
Yeah, so there were some trees that were in conflict. We got to get the trees out of the way to build that foundation for that wall. Barrows has a tree removal guy, he was supposed to be here today. I don't know that he made it today, so they should be removed this week. They're supposed to start, they were tentatively going to start last week, Wednesday, but they couldn't do anything because of trees. The, we did receive the bid for the rock wall proposal that was requested, that I asked them for, and it was, it was a few hundred thousand dollars more than what the building in concrete wall with the rock beside it was going to be, so.
How about we repeat that, please?
Doing it in big rocks, like the two-by-two-by-three natural limestone rocks, was a couple of grand more than doing it as proposed.
Couple of thousand more?
Couple of hundred thousand more.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, so I just told them to go ahead and proceed with the way that we had it originally.
Does this tree person, does he, have we got to grind the stumps out and everything? Is that what they got to do? They got to pull them or?
No, they're going to cut down the trees and they'll probably pull the stumps out with their excavator.
They're not, they're not very, very big, are they?
There's one tree that's pretty substantially sized on the corner of the wall, and that tree has to come down, but the tree is leaning over that trailer house that's there, and it's just, we have to do it or we're going to lose the whole road.
Anything for? All right, thanks, Simon.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us up to our new business. Get a motion to discuss ordinance amending ordinance 2348.
Motion to discuss.
I'll second.
Ms. Slane made the motion, Mr. Meyer seconded it. Ms. Slane, you want to start off?
Are we back just meeting to pass this for an ordinance number?
I think we've got the ordinance in your packet. If you want to make a motion to assign this a number and to read for, on its first reading, we can do it that way.
I make a motion to pass ordinance 2348.
To written, no, to assign a number and read.
To assign a number and read, 2348, for its first reading.
Yep. Okay, I got a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Mr. McLung seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I got my hand up.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I do have a question, and that, because this is just an amendment, does it actually have a new ordinance number?
Yes.
It does? Does it change the ordinance number that's already in the books or?
No, this will be a new ordinance, but it'll be referenced to that. Mr. McLung.
Okay. The way this is written, we have to come back in four months and do another ordinance, period. Whereas if we deleted the sunset clause and this ordinance worked, we wouldn't have to put in a new ordinance or do anything. So since the prior ordinance, 2348, is not working, we're trying to correct it. If this ordinance with double the capacity, two 1, two 35-gallon containers or the equivalent, if it works and we delete the sunset clause, we don't have to come back. It'd be the good, it'd be a good ordinance to be there. But the way this is written, we have to come back and do an ordinance in four months.
Mr. Holfield?
We put the sunset clause in there, so the four months is to give people time to adjust, and then it'll go back to one bag.
Right. Well, if, if the one-bag ordinance is the problem, and this ordinance solves it, then we have to come back and say this is good without a sunset clause. But if it doesn't work.
Four months, I wanted to go back to one bag.
You want to go back to one? Okay.
Yeah, that's what, it was for four months, let people get used to it, and then be informed, and then we'll go back to the one bag.
Okay.
That's what I understand.
I'm just trying to save paperwork.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Mr. Meyer?
This all started because of, a family of four cannot get by with one bag. We have places where there are families of four, and why should they pay more for their trash? Because they have a family. I really like the two-bag thing, people in Eureka already recycle. I don't think it's going to increase or decrease recycling. I think this is the only fair way to do it. In the past, people were putting out as many bags as they wanted, they were wrapping lumber with a bag. We can eliminate that sort of thing. That's kind of an abuse because they can carry things to the recycle center. I'm, I'm all for removing the sunset clause. I move to remove the sunset clause.
Somebody's made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. McLung, you want to talk about the sunset clause? Let's the motion on the table.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think a one-page document like this ordinance is a real big problem in four months, so I agree. I think we need to leave it the way it is and see how it shakes out at the end of four months. If we, you know, we decide to change it, we'll change it. If we want to leave it the same, we'll, we'll put it back the way it is. It's not, it's not rocket science.
And/or, as you mentioned before, change it to the yellow bags.
Yeah, that could be a possibility as well, changing it back to yellow. Well, you know, we could make them green, I don't care.
I think in a green, because it's Earth Day.
Mr. Holfield?
As a reminder, you know, Berryville does one bag, has been doing one bag for 12, 15 years, and their tags are $5 each, not $2 each. So I, and I do believe it does help recycling, because I know people right now, they put their cardboard in their bags, they put their bottles and their cans in the bag, they don't want to mess with the recycling. But if they're paying a little extra to do that, I think they will think about it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Meyer? I know people that recycle that still have to put two bags out, once in a while, and they don't have four persons in their household, but like the fellows from the Recycle Carroll County Solid Waste said, in fact, one of them said, I got a family of four, and there's no way I get by with one bag, so I have to buy a tag for the extra bags.
We're, we're getting off of the argument. The argument is regarding the sunset clause at this point in time.
Yes, and that is why I would like to remove the sunset clause, because the single-bag thing sure raised a lot of stink, and it didn't take long for it to come back to the table, and it'll come back to the table when it sunsets to one bag again, too.
All right, so any further discussion regarding removing the sunset clause? Do we need a voice vote on that?
Do you want to do a roll call?
Yeah, go ahead and do a roll call. This is a roll call on amendment to remove the sunset clause.
Terry McLung?
No.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
David Avanzino?
No.
Autumn Slane? Yes. Steve Holfield?
No.
So we got three noes, two yeses. So that failed. So now where are we?
You're back to passing.
We're back to passing.
Just back to passing. Yeah, back to this, I have no voting.
Do I make a motion again?
No, we're back, we're back to the original motion to assign this a number and read for, first, read for passage on there. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of assigning this a number and reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Oops, all right, 4-1, all right.
Assigning ordinance number 2350 and ordinance amending ordinance 2348 with a sunset clause, whereas ordinance number 2348 limits the amount of trash to one 35-gallon container and/or one trash bag with a maximum capacity of 35 gallons, and whereas one 35-gallon container or one trash bag with a maximum capacity of 35 gallons is inadequate for some households. Now therefore, be it ordained, hereby ordained by the City Council of City of Eureka Springs, that ordinance 2348 be amended to Section 1. Standard weekly trash service shall be for two 35-gallon containers or two trash bags with a maximum capacity of 35 gallons each. Section 2. If more than two containers or bags of trash are placed at the curb for disposal, each additional bag or container must be identified with a bag tag. Bag tags can be purchased for $2 each at Public Works. Any overflow or excess bag of waste not marked with a bag tag will be left on the curb. Section 3. Net income from the bag tags will be contributed towards trash and recycling education. Section 4. Expiration clause. The ordinance herein created shall expire on August 26, 2024 unless further action is taken by the Eureka Springs City Council.
Mr. McLung?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2350 on its first reading.
I'll second.
And Mr. McLung made the motion and Mr. Meyer seconded it to approve it on first reading. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, all passes. All right, Mr. McLung?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2350 by title only for its second reading.
Second.
Mr. McLung made the motion to read ordinance 2350 by title only, Mr. Meyer seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Autumn Slane? Yes. Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2350 and ordinance amending ordinance 2348 with a sunset clause.
Mr. McLung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2350 on the second reading.
Second.
And Mr. McLung made the motion to approve the second reading of 2350, Mr. Meyer seconded it. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go with roll call.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Autumn Slane? Yes. Steve Holfield?
Mr. McLung?
Where are we?
Just approved on second reading.
Third reading? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2350 for the third reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. McLung made the motion, Mr. Meyer seconded it, read ordinance 2350 on third reading.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Autumn Slane? Yes. Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
I make a motion that we approve.
I got to read title only?
Oh, you do, don't you?
Ordinance number 2350 and ordinance amending ordinance 2348 with a sunset clause.
Okay, I make a motion to approve 2350 on its third reading.
Second.
All right, Mr. Meyer made the motion and Mr. McLung seconded it, read ordinance 2350 on its third reading. Any further discussion?
Approve.
Hearing none.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
Autumn Slane? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we read the emergency clause.
And I heard Mr. McLung making motion to approve emergency clause and Mr. Meyer seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Let's get it over with.
David Avanzino?
Yes.
Steve Holfield?
Yes.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Autumn Slane? Yes. Terry McLung?
Yes.
All right, this will go into effect tomorrow after I get it signed.
Should I read it?
Oh, yes. You need to read it.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Emergency clause, section 5, that due to the need to consistently apply all laws and ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs for the health and safety of citizens of the city, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect upon passage by the Eureka Springs City Council, signing by Eureka Springs Mayor and City Clerk Treasurer, and posting of the ordinance.
Thank you, guys. All right. I think this brings us up to our next ordinance is ordinance banning confetti in parades. Mr. Meyer?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, Mr. Meyer made the motion and Ms. Slane seconded it. All right, go for it, Mr. Meyer.
Okay, I, I believe this is a well, well worth it ordinance, the Public Works is, has trouble cleaning up that stuff, and today's Earth Day, it would be a good time to pass the banning of plastic crap on our streets.
Mr. McLung?
Do we need to insert any kind of a thing regarding candy that is, that is not affected by this, you know, because so much of it, well, it all has some kind of a plastic or paper wrapper? I don't know.
Ask our city attorney.
I don't think, Mr. Wiley has said it's not really that much of a problem, and my own personal experience is there are some Tootsie Rolls and other candy left over, but they're relatively easy to sweep up.
I'm not worried about that part, sir. I want to make sure that it's still allowable. I don't want it to be misconstrued.
Oh, well.
As.
This strictly. It's, it's defined as small pieces of streamers, paper, plastic, vinyl, or many thrown. Candy is not confetti.
No, but it's wrapped.
Yeah, it is.
Products. Okay, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Meyer?
If somebody unwraps a piece of candy and sticks it in your mouth and throws the wrapper on the ground, that's littering. That, that, that fits our littering laws. We don't need to worry about that part, but yeah, if we ban candy, we're going to have an uproar.
No, I'm not, I don't, I'm not intending to ban candy.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to protect its ability to remain.
It's pretty clear here about what, what's getting banned.
He's trying to take our fun.
I like getting hit in the head with a jawbreaker every night. I like getting hit in the head with a jawbreaker every now and then.
Let you know you're alive.
Right.
I think, uh, our city attorney's defined confetti pretty much to eliminate the candy.
Everybody's happy, I'm happy.
I move to assign this ordinance a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Uh, who seconded? Mr. Avenzino? Alright, Mr. Meyer made the motion, Mr. Avenzino seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so moved.
Assigning ordinance number two-three-five-one, an ordinance to ban confetti on public property, whereas confetti pollution is wasteful, a detriment to the environment, hard to clean up, and a danger to wildlife, now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs. Section one, confetti is defined as small pieces or streamers of paper, plastic, mylar, or matu- talic material thrown at celebrations, especially parades, that pollute the environment. Section two, it shall be unlawful and an offense against the city for any person to throw or dispense confetti on public property. Section three, any person violating this ordinance shall upon conviction be guilty of a misdemeanor and fine an amount not greater than fifty dollars for a first offense, and not greater than a hundred dollars for a second or subsequent event. Section four, if, for any reason, any portion or portions of this ordinance shall be held invalid, such invalidity shall in no way affect the remaining portions thereof which are valid, but such valid portions shall be and remain in full force and effect.
Mr. Meyer?
I move to approve ordinance twenty-three-fifty-nine on its first reading.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Meyer made the motion, Mr. McClung seconded to approve it, uh, on first reading, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so moved. Alright, um, that brings us up to our second, uh, nope, uh-
We're done.
We're done.
That's it. Quarter reports by our city clerk treasurer.
I know this is riveting stuff.
She doesn't have that big old binder that she used to-
Uh, can we give a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
I don't know who made the motion, Mr. Avenzino?
I'll take it.
Mr. Meyer seconded, alright.
Alright.
So, we have our financial comparative, you guys want to break down, you can, but, um, it's a lot of pages, um, but it compares our accounts payable, payroll, and cash receipts, you'll be able to see first quarter twenty-twenty-four compared to first quarter twenty-twenty-three. Um, and then the other ones are, they come with your, um, packets from Michael for budgeting long-term liability and comparative bank balances, and that's all I got.
How come it's not a stack this high?
Alright, uh, anybody have anything for agenda for next time, at this point? Alright, hearing none, uh, agenda setting, we'll start over with Mr. Holyfield.
Agenda setting?
I mean, not agenda setting, council comments, I'm sorry.
Like, I don't know what my- Um, I've heard other people in town have had sewer line problems, and, and the bills reaching over tens of thousands of dollars, I do really want to recommend, the citizens of Eureka Springs, please look into Service Line Warranties of America, you can Google it, I don't own stock in it, I don't, I don't benefit anything from it, but I did benefit from having it when my sewer line collapsed, it paid fifteen thousand dollars upfront, and I would have been out of my pocket if I didn't have that, and the insurance is seven dollars and thirty-five cents a month, so, uh, it's worth having, you can get it on your sewer line, gas line, and, and water line, please look into it, you never know when this is going to happen, and it definitely saved me some money. CAPC director, we did not have a special meeting a couple weeks ago, that was canceled due to not all the interviews being complete, but we are supposed to vote on this, this coming meeting, this Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at six o'clock.
How many applications, or what's your choice, it's down to three, is that right?
I think it's three.
Three. That's it.
Mr. Avenzino?
Uh, first of all, I want to welcome the new commissioners, Michael and Aaron, uh, and of course, Simon's already left, but, um, all the work that Public Works keeps doing, um, thank you very much, and also, I debated whether putting this on the agenda for the next meeting, but I'm going to hold it, uh, 'cause I received many phone calls regarding, um, what appears to be a really big spike in Airbnbs, VRVOs, Vacasas, all this kind of stuff, um, so I'm just, at this point, I'm collecting data, uh, I will, um, after I have all this, I plan on visiting with the clerk, uh, to see where we can go further from there, so, yes, I'm hearing all of you.
Ms. Slane?
Um, I just want to thank, uh, Michael and Ida for our budgets, I know they're a lot of work, and I just appreciate the work done for them, thank you, that's all, all Michael. I doubt-
I don't think he heard you, but that's what-
[laughing]
Mr. Meyer?
Well, I want to say a few words about Earth Day, fifty-four years ago this month, the environmental issue came of age in American political life, April twenty-second, nineteen-seventeen dawned literally millions of Americans of all ages, from all walks of life, participating in Earth Day celebrations. How did Earth Day change the nation? My primary objective, uh, the primary objective, uh, of Earth Day was to show the political leadership of the, of the nation, that there was broad and deep support for the environmental movement. While I was convinced that a nation peaceful, nationwide peaceful demonstration of concern would be impressive, I was not quite prepared for the overwhelming response that occurred that day, two thousand colleges and universities, ten thousand high schools and grade schools, and several thousand communities all around, I remember that, I was old, I was, I'm old that old, uh, Americans participated. Earth Day nineteen-seventeen made it clear that we would summon the public support, the energy and commitment to save our environment. Uh, the ten years since nineteen-seventy, uh, several laws were enacted, the Clean Air Act, the Water Quality Improvement Act, the Water Pollution and Control Amendment, the Resource Recovery Act, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, this Toxic Substance Control Act, the Occupational and Safety and Health Act, the Federal Environmental Safe Pesticide Control Act, the Endangered Species Act, the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Federal Land Policy and Management Act, the Surface Mining Control and Reclaim Act. What I remember from those days was when you went into a big city like Chicago or New York, the road, the air, you could not see the tops of the buildings for the pollution, if you touched anything, coal soot was on your hand, 'cause everything was heated with coal. Um, we need alternate energy, and that's why I wouldn't oppose wind generation as long as it's placed in a place where there's sufficient wind for it, I don't believe there's sufficient wind for one in Eureka Springs, as far as I can see on the wind maps that I get online. Uh, the place that they, that there's proposed, yes, they have the, they have the sustained average wind speed of nine miles per hour, which is suitable, so, that's my take, thank you.
Mr. McClung?
I just, uh, would like to concur with, with Autumn and, and, you know, and supporting the, uh, the city staff, Public Works, Michael, and what he does, Police Department, all of, uh, you know, uh, they, they never get enough thanks, so it's always good to, to, uh, send them a bone every once in a while. Keep up the good work, boys and girls, we're proud of you.
Alright, I want to, we received a, a letter, um, following those same lines, from Dick Titus on Twelve White Street, and he says, "To whom it may concern, I'd like to find, thank the following people for helping me with an eight-month saga to get the sewer replaced at Twelve White Street. I'll start with Simon Wiley at Public Works, he suggested the company that was doing the excavation for city water leaks, Simon gave me the contact information and offered any assistance that he could provide, this was a huge first step. C-4 excavation of Anderson, Missouri came and looked at the job and gave me an estimate. When they finished with the city work, they sent a crew to start my project, I'm very impressed with the professionalism of all the people with whom I had contact. The C-4 crew was very accommodated and worked with the plumber and city to get this completed as quickly as possible, there's a lot of challenges while doing this replacement, and everyone worked together to get it done correctly. Jacob Coburn and Ed, the city inspectors, were helpful in working through the challenges that were discovered as the job progressed. Keeping White Street open while digging across the width of the street was a challenge. Eureka Springs Transit Department was patient and understanding, the trolley was kept on schedule, and I especially want to commend the skill of the trolley drivers for navigating the trolley through the construction areas that had mere inches to spare at times. My sincere thanks to Kim Stryker at City Hall for her patience and understanding, she issued the street closure permit after an exclamation why half the street had to be closed most of the time the work was being performed. A special mention for Neil Prum, who owns Arrowhead Plumbing, uh, Neil agreed to do the plumbing for the project, but did much more than put the pipe in the ditch. Uh, Neil worked with me, C-4 inspectors, to make this possible. My final thanks goes to all the neighbors and the public that traveled White Street, your understanding and sympathy is greatly appreciated, this was a very stressful time for me, and your understanding of my predicament helped keep my sanity, I now have a functioning sewer line that is watertight and worry-free, this is one small step to stop the sewage from seeping into our historic springs." Dick Titus. I'd say that because, as mentioned before, I think our, uh, Public Works employees and all the city employees, a lot of times I get a lot of the negative comments, but they don't get the, the kudos sometimes, and, and citizens do this, and I think it's, uh, to let them know that they are appreciated, because it is the hard work keeping things up in this city. So, with, uh, with that, we have a lot of activities coming up to Eureka for the next three weeks, uh, one of the favorite that a lot of people enjoy and brings a lot of people around is Yards and Yards and Yards of Yard Sales, uh, weekend of four-twenty-six and four-twenty-eight, all over Eureka, all over town, and probably the county. Uh, Carving the Ozarks is also four-twenty-six and four-seven, uh, it's up at Cornerstone Bank this year, the one-fifty-seven East Van Buren. Mike Campbell and the Dirty Knobs is in concert at the Auditorium on Friday, four-twenty-six, should be a hot concert, so, if you really want to hear some really good old-fashioned-
Rock and roll.
Rock and roll, come in here, um, and the Eureka Springs Historical Museum, grand reopening, uh, on May the second, from ten, ten a.m., uh, on ninety-five South Main, if you haven't been to the Historical Museum, you're missing a chance, it is a great facility, has a lot of great artwork and, and historical artifacts at Eureka Springs.
That's the fifth, that's the fifth, the fifth.
The fifth?
Oh, that's the, that's the art museum, not the historic.
Now I'm confused, no, okay, this is the, yeah, grand reopening of the art museum, um, the Historical Museum, on five seconds.
We're not going to discuss.
Okay, uh, I'm going to, yeah, and then we got the Jerry Berry, Jerry Berry Music Festival, five-three and five-four at the Farm, uh, Art Center Street Market on the fourth, ten to five, at Main, at, um, Art Center Street, Center Street, Art Rageous Parade, May the fourth, uh, no confetti guys, uh, at two p.m., you can throw candy, but no confetti. Uh, Jazz in the Park, five-fourth, with Alicia Patello Electric Band, uh, they'll be playing the Basin Park Band Shell after the Art Rageous Parade. Uh, First Saturday Artwork, May the fourth, from four to seven, Drumming in the Park from five-fourth, on May the fourth, six to eight, uh, Makers Market, uh, on May the tenth through the eleventh, and we don't have, but we, the art museum at the community centers on the fifth-
Fifth, from three to five.
From three to five, uh, and if you haven't been up to the, the old high school and the new community center up there, they have a great art museum, they've just created, uh, and it's really nice, and this is the old grand opening for that, the fifth of May from ten to five.
Three to five.
Three to five.
Three to five, uh, and they've done a great job, and it's, it's really a compilation of all the, all the Eureka artists, so you get a chance to go up and look at them. Uh, Makers Market, five-ten, at Spring Street, main stage, uh, Bridge of Love Living Art Insulations on, uh, Main Street Pedestrian Bridge on May the tenth through the twelfth, and Jazz in the Park on May the eleventh, the King Cabbage Brass Band for five to seven in Basin Park, and that's, those are great, that's another great group. So, we got a lot of activities going on in the next three weeks, so, if you get a chance, get out and enjoy, so, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Mr. Meyer, can you do anything about the, uh, tarebaccles that are flying around here?
Yeah.